Okay, we do have majority online right now. We have about one hundred eighty. But we still have more people joining, so I think you can go ahead and start.
Okay, mahalo Sharice, aloha, aloha, ahiai kau, mahalo no ka kou, pakahi apo. For joining us this evening for the first or for the second Hawaii County Community Hearing related to closure of the Waipio Valley Access Road. Ova'oa Cyrus Kolkani Jonasen, and I am the Public Information Officer for the County of Hawaii. And I'll be hosting along with Sharice Kanai Kana, the PIO, or Public Information Officer for our department of Public Works this evening. Alongside Sharice and I, we have some formal members of our cabinet as well as Mayor Roth, so we have, and please wave or indicate you're on when I call your name. First, we have Director of Public Works, Ikaike Rodenhurst. We have the Director of Finance, Diana Sako. We have Council Member Heather Kimball. I believe we have Director of Art Research and Development Doug Adams. And also, of course, we have Mayor Roth on as well. So, oh, and I believe we have the Deputy Director of Public Works, Stephen Palsy, on here as well. Okay, that being said, we're on a very tight schedule tonight, and we plan to end promptly at seven o'clock. Don't worry, this will not, this will not be the last public hearing or meeting that we have with all of you. Our intention is to continue to keep you up to date and informed as much as possible moving forward. But, you know, that being said, we have a lot of people joining, we're up to two hundred and twenty-three participants with more joining, so I anticipate that we won't have an opportunity for everyone to speak tonight. But we will try and get through as many of you folks as possible. If we do not get to you tonight, please email Sharice or myself, she'll put our contact information in the chat box, and we'll get back to you one by one and respond to any concerns or comments that you may have. We will also be hosting, like I said, another talk story with the community, hopefully next time in person. So I do apologize if any of you had difficulties getting to wifi or a mobile device or anything like that this evening to be able to access this meeting. We are working to be as transparent as possible, and we're working to outreach as much as possible to as many members of the community as this is a huge deal, and it means a lot to us to have all of your input here tonight. So, you know, that being said, we will get back to you, you can ask a lot of the members that are probably on here tonight, we've been going back and forth. We're trying to be as responsible as possible, so we do appreciate all of you who have already reached out with your concerns, with your questions, we've been trying to address them one by one as well as add them to our talking points this evening to make sure that everyone is being heard and that we're addressing the main concerns of the community. That being said, let's move forward to ground rules for tonight. You know, tonight's meeting is specific to the temporary closure of the Waipio Valley Access Road and the mayor's emergency proclamation related there to it. It is also specific to the geotechnical report that prompted this closure that you'll hear a little bit about from our Department of Public Works a little bit later. Anything outside of that will not be responded to this evening. In fact, we will put you on mute if you do go into other topics, we want to make sure that we're speaking specifically to the closure and to add to the reasons why we've done what we've done. If you would like to speak, please indicate so now by raising your hand using the raise hand feature located in the toolbar below. Sharice will go ahead and document everybody whose hands up as they appear to her randomly on her screen. Once she documents that order, we'll proceed by that through the rest of the evening. Again, if we don't get to you, we are sorry, we did not anticipate to have so many participants this evening, although we're very happy to have all of you here. Once we get to the community manao portion, Sharice will call you by name and unmute your microphone, you'll be muted until then, and we ask that you keep your mics off to give everybody a chance to speak and not to interrupt anyone, including our panelists and/or community testifiers. At thirty seconds, she'll drop a thirty-second warning in the chat box, and then after the two-minute warning, she will mute your mic and move on to the next person. It's nothing personal, but we want to make sure everybody, we can get as many people heard as possible. If you wish to continue on, again, you can email us at any time, and we're happy to hear your concern and chat with you offline as well. All email testimony will be shared with the mayor, so just know that we are not just collecting it and letting it die in an email, it is all going up to the very top of our organization. And all of the manao is taken into serious consideration. Lastly, you know, we're here as a community, so no bullying, yelling, or profanity will be accepted or tolerated. If you choose to break any of those rules, you will be kicked out of this meeting, no questions asked. And the reason for that is we're coming here humbly, and we ask that all of you come here humbly as well. And so without further ado, I'm just gonna give a quick pule and we'll get started. So, a komakoua, loko klani, mahalo nui for bringing us here tonight to discuss the Waipio Valley Access Road. As you know, the Waipio Valley is a wahipana to so many, it means so many, it means so much to to all of us for so many different reasons, and so we just ask for your guidance over this meeting for the ike and the manao to be fruitful and so so that we can, we can move forward in a way that's best for all of us. That being said, makainou kekei, meka ohana, mulele, amen. And let us begin by introducing Mayor Roth, who's gonna open with a few words.
Sorry, Mayor Roth, I am trying to unmute you as we speak, hold on. There you go, now you can unmute yourself.
Okay, there it goes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so first off, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight and being here. I have to start off with an apology to the tour operators, I know that we did speak, and I know that you all have an attorney, and so our attorneys are talking through each other, and there's communications that are continuing. Just a couple of things. This is not something that we wanted to do, it's something that, you know, we had to do. The geotechnical report was not asked for during this administration, it was done prior to this administration. And for those of you who have not seen the report, it is online at the Public Works website. This has nothing to do with, you know, the DMAP or Destination Management Action Plan where they talked about, you know, giving places a time to cool off, this is purely about safety, and so the geotechnical report came back, talked about some places where it's possible rocks to slide onto the road and some places where the road is, could possibly slide out itself. So, we looked at safety, and we're looking at how do we open this road up, so we do not plan on this road being closed permanently. The plan is to get it fixed as quickly as possible to make it so people can get down to the valley in a safe manner. So, again, the purpose is not to take away access to the valley. The purpose is to make the road better, to make it safer, so people can go up and up and back. You know, the report, and I know that we have some people that disagree with the report on here. Hey, get me some engineers that that can talk to us, right now our engineers are telling us the safety factor makes it an issue, so we look forward to hearing you. It was, you know, never the intention of putting anybody out of business or taking away things that people have. Clearly, this is just about safety. For those of you who've been traversing this road for a while, you know, the road's been a problem for a while. We are taking action, we're not gonna kick the can down the road. We want to take action to open the road so people have access. I think those are pretty much the points, this is not, again, something that we wanted to do, it's something that we had to do. So I don't know how many times I can say that, I know that people have asked different questions, how come these guys come in, how come we can't come in? We had a lot of talks about that, we wanted to make sure our residents were able to come in. We have a food crisis on our island, and so food sustainability is a big deal, so we looked at those things. If this road, and I said this before, if there was another access to the valley other than this road, we would have closed this road completely. So, we look forward to hearing from you, we're eager to hear from you, we're eager to hear new ideas. Hopefully, there's things that we haven't thought about. But we're also, you know, looking at how do we do this and keep this as safe as possible. So, tonight, we intend on listening, taking notes, and this is not the last time we're gonna be meeting, as Cyrus said, we intend on meeting a lot more in the future, try to give you regular updates. So that's really all I have to say, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight, and I want to thank my team that's here to answer questions, and I'm here to answer questions as well. So, thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to Cyrus or to, I'll turn it back over to Cyrus, thank you.
Aloha, Mayor Roth, as he said, you know, again, a lot of thought went into this, and more thought will continue to go into this moving forward as we continue to address this, address this community far and wide. You know, the people of Hawaii come from Waipio Valley, we know that through Hala'ua, through Lila'ua. And so we're all connected in some way, shape, or form. And so I just want to keep that in mind as we continue to move forward, that we're all here together as a family, as a community. And with that, I want to turn it over to Deputy Director, well, actually, I'll turn it over to Director Ikaike Rodenhurst for a few words, and then he'll kick it to Deputy Director Stephen Palsy, who will give us the briefing summary of the geotechnical report, go into some timeline information, and then we'll kick it over to the community. We have twenty minutes blocked out for that, but we're gonna try and make it as fast as possible to make sure that we have time for as many voices to be heard, mahalo nui.
Mahalo Cyrus and mahalo mayor, for your words and your introductions, mahalo everyone for attending this meeting and to get some informational updates on what we have happening here on Waipio Valley Road. I understand there's a lot of frustration, a lot of, some, some, a lot of confusion, so hopefully, after this meeting, we can clarify some of those things. And I appreciate Deputy Director Stephen Palsy being here to provide the information. I don't want to take any more time away from getting that information out to you, so I will turn it over to Deputy Director Stephen Palsy to go over briefly the geotechnical study and what our next steps are and what our efforts are to communicate effectively to you the status and the ongoing efforts to improve this road, so Steve, take it away.
Thanks, Ikaike. Sharice, I think we're gonna share a few slides with the group. Many of you have seen these, if you've participated or watched the video from the last meeting that we had. I'm gonna just do a brief summary of the results of the geotechnical study that we're talking about here this evening. The study was called the Preliminary Geotech Engineering Evaluation, it was done by the company Hart Krauser. The original purpose when they were contracted, as Mayor mentioned in the prior administration in 2020, was to address the roadway safety due to rockfall and slope instability hazards, there have been occurrences in both 2018 and 2019 that created enough concern to do an evaluation of of the area, especially the overhangs, the slopes, and the bottom side slopes as well. So, briefly, the results of the geotech evaluation, Sharice, next slide. Thank you. So, the results were pretty clear in terms of recommendations for the assessment of what the conditions are. And I'm not going to read the slides, you all can read, and you may have already looked at the video or participated, but essentially, it's it concludes that there is some mitigation or some remedial measures that need to be done for rockfalls on the upslope side of the road. This will lower the risk to vehicles as well as pedestrians traveling in the road. The slope instability, which is the slope on the downward side, is very steep, is subject to exposure to water and wind and erosion, and topside heavy vegetation, which could cause that slope to fail. And it would all worsen under conditions of heavy rainfall or prolonged rainfall events. Conditions similar to what occurred in March of 2019 when there's a landslide area are present and create a risk as far as the downhill slope areas and risk of failure. The upsloped rocks instability needs to be addressed, this comes right out of the report because there are risks to pedestrians and vehicles as they traverse the road, and by doing something about this, we can decrease that risk. And then based on these results, there is an estimated there is an estimated risk of injury or loss of life, especially for pedestrians, and it is those risks do exceed established thresholds for acceptable risk. Next slide. As a result, we, DPW and the engineers working on this, did come to some conclusions and make some recommendations to the mayor. The first is to, the ideal way to limit risk is to reduce exposure. The greatest risks are, right now, are for people traversing the road as pedestrians up and down the road. So, the first recommendation was to prohibit roadway usage by pedestrians, and this would reduce the possibility of injury and loss of life due to falling debris, falling rocks. The second recommendation was to limit roadway usage to local vehicle traffic only, this again reduces exposure, thereby reduces risk and limits the wear and tear on the road to possibly prolong the road usability for the people that do live in or work or farm down in the valley. And then, lastly, closing the road to all traffic at certain times when heavy rainfall events are predicted or occur is going to be necessary, this is going to reduce the possibility of injury or loss of life due to the upper or lower slope failure, rocks falling or slopes failing. And again, rain, seismic activity is another area that could conceivably create a big issue with slope failure, next. As Mayor mentioned, this is not a permanent closure. The next steps, please, thank you. This is not a permanent closure, so the immediate thing that we're doing is we are continuing to work with Hart Krauser, and we are working on developing a mitigation plan, what is that, there are several ways to manage this, there are ways to take care of things immediately, there are ways to reduce the risk, there are ways to eliminate the risk. We will be working diligently over the next four to six months with Hart Krauser, developing detailed investigations and identifying the proper fixes. We need to set priorities and determine what are the areas that we need to address immediately, what are maybe some areas that we can fix easily and take care of them right away, and then follow that up with more detailed design in permitting. I can assure you that the next four to six months will allow us to get a better picture of exactly the situation and begin the means, begin the process of correcting them. It could also end up telling us that there are areas that are maybe not quite as bad as this initial investigation told us, and we may be able to open up the road sooner, but the short of it is the next steps in the next four to six months, doing this additional investigation is critical. Following that, we're looking at preparing detailed plans and specs, and then another portion of this is completing all the environmental necessary permitting, the environmental assessment, the evaluations for archaeological resources. So what we're looking at is over the course, I would say, of the next year to eighteen months, to be in a place where we are identifying what needs to be done and also moving forward and implementing, or beginning to implement, measures that will reduce the risk, that will improve the safety conditions of the roadway, and it will also track us a long-term means to make the road safe looking forward. This is a high-level overview, next page, the report is available on the website, I think a number of you have read it, a number of you have had questions. We will continue to do our best to answer all of the technical questions, and one other point would be from DPW's perspective is the continuing commitment to be transparent, to work with the community, to let you know what we're doing, to let you know what the results of our investigations are, to let you know what we're looking at for plans. And certainly, I think a question came up about roadway closure. We do have a system in place, and we can also work through civil defense, if there are situations with heavy rainfall events where we do need to close the road, is to communicate with everyone and use all of the tools that we have available to do that, but this is not going to be a permanent closure, I think a number of people have expressed this, we have a, we have a very important job to do here, and it's to remedy and reduce the risk and make the road safe for passage for vehicles as well as pedestrians.
Mahalo, Steve, and I think to add just to that point, there is no intention of this being a permanent closure after roadwork is done as well. So not only is this closure not intended to be permanent, there is no intention for permanent closure thereafter. And so that, hopefully, that can quell some of the questions that we had coming in. That being said, I'm gonna kick it over to Sharice, who is, I think, letting a few more folks in from the waiting room, and then she'll kick it over to Community Concerns.
Or you might.
She'll kick it over to Community Manao and get everybody rocking and rolling. So thank you all so much for listening, and we look forward to hearing from.
Hi. We are going to start, so again, to restate what Cyrus said before, you have two minutes to speak, and at thirty seconds, we'll give a warning. Now, I know a lot of people's chat rooms are not open, so we are, I'm just gonna say thirty seconds. You'll have that thirty seconds left, and then we'll go ahead and finish your time up. We have the first person here is Chris Yuan. Sorry, Chris, I have to go find you first.
I'm right here up at the top.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so you can go ahead and start, you have two minutes.
Aloha, everyone. I first want to say I'm speaking in my private, as a private citizen and not in any official capacity. The geotechnical risk assessment is wrong. It overstates the risk to pedestrians by about two hundred and eighty times, and it overstates the risk to vehicles by about a hundred times. This is not a matter of engineering judgment or professional expertise. This is a matter of common sense and basic math. All of the numbers that I'm going to give come from the consultants and are derived from their numbers. It would take me about five minutes to completely explain all this, but I'm gonna just give an explanation, I think that's enough to explain why these numbers have to be wrong. The key estimates that the consultant gives are that one in eighteen thousand pedestrians who go into the valley will be killed by a rockfall, and one in one hundred and seventy thousand motorists. Pre-COVID, there are about fifty thousand pedestrians a year going into the valley. If you use that one in eighteen thousand figure, that means that two-point-eight pedestrians per year would be killed by a rockfall. This hasn't happened, and the fact that it hasn't happened is statistically, it's almost statistically impossible that two years would go by without a person being killed by.
You have thirty seconds.
Here's the bigger problem. The consultant estimates six rockfalls a year. For two-point-eight rockfalls to hit people, half the rockfalls would have to hit a pedestrian. Think about the Waipio Valley Road. Almost, it's almost all empty space at any one time, the probability of a rock is going, the rock is gonna hit empty space almost all the time, there is no way.
So, Mr. Yuan, if you can put the rest of your comments in the chat or send it for our email, mahalo for your input. Next, we have the Blanchett Madoff. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, and after that, we have Kwai Chang Pabiko in the waiting room. Did he unmute himself?
Hi, were you calling David Blanchett Madoff?
Yes.
Aloha, how are you? And hello, Mayor Mitch, how are you doing? I was reading your pronouncement. Hang on, let me turn off the feedback on this. I was reading your pronouncement, you cited section, what is it, two sixty-four dash one for authority for the closure, I was a little confused because two sixty-one, it entitles you to use special methods to to remedy the matter, and it has a duration of only five years, but it still leaves you bound by the regular section of law for closures. And the section of law for closures, it appears places closures under the county for permanent or semi-permanent closures under county legislation by vote, so I was a little confused about that. Secondly, I have to agree with the fellow statistics. The statistics are astronomically low based on the actual data, which is one of the considerations in any statistical study. And secondly, if this were applied to, say, the road past the gulches, I think the growth past the gulches would have been closed a long time ago. Third, I was reading your recommendations, you're worried about wear and tear, but that would, the wear and tear would result in the collapse of the road below, not above.
Yeah, thirty seconds.
All in all, it's just difficult to understand why you have a closure of this nature on such an old road that doesn't bear out a safety record that we warranted at this particular time. Now, the emergency enactment, if you're calling it that, would enable you to act swiftly and with certain immunities, but it does not authorize the closure itself. Thanks, aloha, for letting me testify.
Mahalo for that, next we have up is Kwai Chang. Kwai Chang, you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Aloha, my name is Kwai Chang Pabiko, I'm from Hilo, with many ohana and hualoha out in Waipio Valley, and I have much love and respect and admiration for that wahipana. I just want to say that we should actually not be looking at this from an engineer or a tourism perspective. Yeah, all wahipana should have time to rest. From Waipio Valley to Mauna Kea Access Road, we should be able, as Kanaka, set the precedence for all wahipana to have time to rest. I believe that tour companies and everyone who wants to enjoy this wahipana should be educated and taught on how to save these sacred. On how to save these sacred spaces, yeah, that we should be able to put certain areas to rest and you. You create your business and your business plan and your business model and you're trying to enjoy these Vahipana around that season. If you look at the Ahupah system of old, that is how we actually. Had resources. That's how we saved all these places and the these wonderful resources for generations.
You have thirty seconds.
So I just want to say I am in support of a temporary road closure for Waipio Valley and all Vahipana. On all islands, that everyone must understand that we are in an island. Economy and we have limited resources. Please save our resources for generations to come. Mahalo.
Mahalo Qui Chang. Uh, next we have David Hunt and then after him will be Keenan. You can unmute yourself, David Hunt.
I'm going to pass and just enter my comments as text, just to give others a opportunity to speak. I'm I'm entering in his text right now. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Keenan, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and Alex Woodbury, you are next.
All right, hello. So. According to Article twelve, Section seven of the Hawaii Constitution. There are certain gathering rights and cultural rights which Hawaiians are entitled to. And if. Landowners, farmers, etc., Airbnb people who run, I just looked it up, there's a botanical. Place, a house you can rent for nine hundred dollars. It's available starting on the ninth. I I believe if if these accesses are still permissible, the mayor had mentioned food sustainability is a is a big thing, he said. Well, fishing, I believe, eating fish and being able to access the ocean. Along the shoreline, especially now with gas prices spiraling. It's a very real concern. Uh, as are the aforementioned cultural rights. I've been told that there are heyos in Waipio. I'm not sure. I I haven't been. Uh, in many years, but I I would like, I would like the opportunity. And I believe that I am entitled again under Article twelve, Section seven, I would encourage you all to look it up. The Hawaii Constitution. Also, when this meeting was opened, the mayor made reference. He he apologized to the tour operators, which I I I thought was interesting. Uh, how how did he put it here? In any case.
You have thirty seconds.
I believe that we people who are. Uh, entitled to these rights ought to at least be given the same deference and apology. Oh, I I remember it's because of a lawsuit. That's right. He said his lawyers were talking to their lawyers. So I understand. How that works. So I I I guess that that is the path we'll have to pursue, but I I'd prefer it be otherwise and perhaps you could. Make an exception again according to the aforementioned statute and allow Hawaiians into Waipio. Thank you.
Thank you, Keenan. Uh, next we have Alex Woodbury. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Um. Mayor, everyone, hello. Uh. You know, I guess one of the things that's just terribly concerning to me is the loss of access. I myself and and many of my my friends and family are a regular. Uh, beachgoers at Waipio, avid surfers, body surfers. There's got to be a solution during this road closure to ensure that we still have access to this place. Frequent it. Fifty, eighty, a hundred times a year. Every time we're down there, we do our part. We pick up trash, we clean the place up. We leave no trace and we want to keep doing that, you know, it's a, it's something that's a. Very important to us, very sacred to us. So there's got to be some sort of a balance to allow. Those of us are. Ocean goers to. To still retain our our access during this temporary closure. You know, the risk, the risk of rockfall according to the report is actually. Lower than the risk of drowning and we're there to be in the ocean, so. I kind of feel like I'll I'll take my chances. And. You know, I think many of my friends would agree. Certainly don't want to be divisive, but. There's, there's, there's got to be some sort of common ground that we can reach here to.
Thirty seconds.
We can still. We can still access. The shoreline, yeah. So. Thank you again and, uh, you know, please consider our desire. It's our home. I mean, I've been been going there since I was old enough to walk. That's all I have.
Mahalo, Alex. Uh, next we have Kulia and then we will go to Iini. Kahakalau after that. Kulia, can you unmute yourself?
Aloha. Um, I I just wanted to speak on on behalf of Ohana and hopefully many others who who aren't here this evening. But when we were growing up, we were always taught that Waipio was so sacred. Going to take care and, you know, going to let you know when when it wasn't happy with what was going on and. And for us, as from our view, it was, it was just torture to see what was happening. Every day when you go out there, it's it's something, something going on in the valley, on the road. History spent. And I know that people, you know, want to go back into the valley, but. It's it's nice to let them rest a little bit. And and I just hope that, you know, in time, more of our families will be welcome back in. For us, we have a nonprofit and and we we understand we wasn't getting an attorney, you know, to say that we should be having our school kids. To go down to Malama Ina, we respect that it needed to, you know, the land, the road issue needed to be cared for. And, um, yeah, it's just for us, we, um, we just mahalo you folks for taking this seriously. We did see the landslide that was along the access road back in two thousand nineteen. And it was two hundred by four hundred feet. And it went right up to the edge of the sediment.
Thirty seconds.
I think for us, it was already alarming back then, three years ago. Just wanting, hoping that it doesn't collapse. Yeah, but mahalo, aloha.
Mahalo, Kulia. Uh, next we have Iini. You can unmute yourself.
Aloha, my kako. Ova'ua iini kahakalau, born and raised in Waipio Valley. Mahalanoi for having this tonight. If the, so for decades, before I was even born, people have, we've been asking for kokoa with Waipio in so many ways. With agriculture, with Malama Ina, with the road. And so finally, this is a movement. Um, and so I hear that the safety of the road is an issue. But I want to be clear that the geological, even though that is an issue, is not the only issue we have with the road. We risk our lives every day, not just on a sketchy road, but on a sketchy road with people who don't know how to drive it. Tourists and locals. So. My concern is once the geological issues are fixed and mahalanoi for taking this seriously. My concern is once that's power, all the road is nice and fixed now. The floodgate opens, the surge of people whose weekend plans have been bummed out. Um, are finally going to start coming. That is still a safety risk. On top of the geological, it's the two man peak here. The two-legged peak here, I'm the man. So please take that in account and there has to be a plan as well to start. How are we gonna let that happen naturally? Because I know once everyone's here is Waipio is open, they're gonna charge them, right? They're gonna come down for all the stuff that they missed out. And so please take into consideration the geological and the. The surge of people that will come. Those are both safety issues and have been safety issues.
Thirty seconds. Mahalo, Iini. Uh, next we will have Alex Stein, I believe. And then after him will be Brandon Lee. You can unmute yourself.
Aloha, thank you for having me, guys. I'm calling from Dallas, Texas. I want to tell you guys, really, the mayor should be ashamed of yourselves. I got injured. On the Waipio Valley Access Road on my honeymoon. We were staying at the Hilton Grand Vacations on a timeshare. And what was supposed to be the best vacation or the best trip of my life with my wife ended up being the biggest nightmare of my life. We got hit by a rock and I'll be honest, I had been drinking, I had been doing some other stuff. I end up ended up getting charged with a DUI and I was also had some cartilage damage on my left side. While I was in jail, my wife, not knowing anybody, trying to call bail bonds and trying to get me out of jail. Somehow the tow truck driver takes her back to my hotel, ends up having an affair. She ends up. Ends up ruining her whole marriage. Now her and I are going through a total legal battle that I I could.
Alex, this, this, this meeting is specific to the road closure.
This is why, because you, yeah, because your your bad roads is. Listen, this isn't the first time y'all have had an accident on this road and because of your bad roads, that's why this happened. So I don't want to be muted. I don't. I want my two minutes to talk. I need my two minutes. Quit muting me. Yourself. You guys are a bunch of dumb Hawaiian, know how to fix the road. You guys are all a bunch of idiots. Don't even know how to fix the road. You got people hitting it and now you're driving down the road. You gotta. Because you guys are all a bunch of imbeciles and you don't even know how to drive down the street.
Ekala mai au. Uh, for that, we we tried to get him off a little quicker, but, you know. I think that's a perfect example of what we don't want to see tonight. And, uh, you know, I saw a lot of smiling faces and we can all agree. That we might not agree on the road closure, but we can certainly agree. On that type of behavior not being acceptable here. And so just want to bring us back together as Ohana. Uh, and let Sharice get back to calling folks who are coming with respect and aloha for our play.
Mahalo, Brandon, you can now unmute yourself.
I feel like that was a gift. I keep hearing it's all about safety. It's all about safety. How safe? And safety for whom? It's not about safety. I mean, how safe do we really want to make it? Are we gonna allow two-wheel drive cars to be able to go up and down Waipio Hill? Are we gonna make it? Easier to be more accessible? I think the real thing should be that all of Hawaii's really specific, beautiful spots like Waipio. Need to be accessible by four-wheel drive only. The only way to get to these places are with four-wheel drive. Now Mitch, here's the solve. It's easy. Don't rent four-wheel drive vehicles. People that rent four-wheel drive vehicles when they're visiting. Don't belong in places that don't go. If you can't have four-wheel drive, you can't go to certain spots. If you're able to go to certain spots because you're part of a family and you have access to a truck or a four-wheel drive. Then you can go down or then you can go to Makalavema or then you can go to many different spots that are four-wheel drive only. Make sure rental cars are not allowed to rent four-wheel drives. It's very simple. Rental cars don't even need, they 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 don't want to go over Saddle Road. They don't want the cars to go down Waipio. They don't want them to go on these rough roads. So why rent them at all? I say no more four-wheel drive vehicles. Keep all the roads as rough as we can.
Thirty seconds.
A very rough road to beautiful places is okay to traverse. No more four-wheel drive vehicles. No more of that. It's really simple. Mitch, just tell them no more. Big Island does not rent four-wheel drive vehicles. Mahalo and aloha.
Mahalo, Brandon. Next we have, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who is on here, but there is a Galaxy S twenty-one Ultra. Is the next person and then after that, it looks like Kyra. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. Galaxy S twenty-one. Okay, let's go to Kyra and we'll get back to you, Galaxy. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Kyra.
Okay, I think that's on. Hi, so I am. Part of the tour operators down there and I know that people are at the moment not. Like we've been asking for years and this is our, what we would like is just to stop the Jeeps and the hikers. Mainly because, you know, I drive the hill every day, multiple times a day, and I know exactly. We understand how dangerous it can be and a lot of that is contributed to the hikers and the Jeeps. And we would, you know, we, we would like to work with the community and everyone to to be able to open back up again. And maybe do it in a smaller scale. But yes, that's all I have to, I have to say, but like you just think it like it like, yes, we're not farmers, but we also are small local business. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mahalo, Kyra. Uh, we can go back to Galaxy and then after Galaxy, we have Peter. Galaxy, can you unmute yourself? Galaxy twenty-one Ultra. Oh, there. Oh, no. Okay, as we're waiting for Galaxy S twenty-one, we'll assist you in how to unmute yourself. We can go ahead and go to Peter. Peter, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two.
Two minutes, yes. Aloha to everybody and thank you for allowing this conversation to occur. So I've been, I'm not a native Hawaiian or anything, but I've been a resident of Hawaii my whole life, born and raised. And. Been to Waipio Valley many times and hike Waipio Trail. And yes, it is a very sacred place and hundred percent should respect everything and everyone that. Has ancestral ties to the valley. And and I asked the county to think about. The access. And the opportunity really that would exist. If we look back at historical access, how did people get up and down the valley in ancient, ancient times? Well, it was by foot. If we can connect, continue to allow the access by foot rather than by vehicle and maybe even, you know. You know, and I hate to put this on the people in Waipio Valley, but think of the opportunity and the. I don't know. I guess the aura of it is going back to the old ways. By foot, by horse, by mule. That would alleviate much of the. Wear and tear on the road. To transport goods, namely kalau. From the valley to the top.
You have thirty seconds.
And. I just feel that, you know, by taking away the access to the people on foot, it's gonna be a. It's a little too much when you're still allowing the vehicle access and that's really the. Main. I guess. Detriment to the road and the access to the valley. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Mahalo, Peter. Next, we will go to Edward Lindsay and then we'll get Anakeku after that. So, Edward Lindsay, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, it's always a bunch of dumb Hawaiians trying to hang up on me when I'm trying to get, I'm trying to send my message and of course you're trying to do this. It's a bunch of idiots.
I am so sorry. I am trying my quickest to get him out. Anakeku. You can unmute yourself, please.
Aloha, my kako. I'm one of those who's been trying to educate our dumb Hawaiians for the last thirty-five years. And I have to say, Alkupuna already knew we were brilliant and I, as an educator, know we were brilliant. So we will not take this personally, right? So, um, I've lived at the Waipio lookout since the early nineties. Uh, have been down in. Uh, have been down in Waipio, raised my, my children down there, had educational programs down there for the last thirty-something years. And really, this whole Hawaiian charter school movement started in Waipio Valley. Because we learned how to live the way Alkupuna lived, and so it's a very, very special place to us. And going down now, you know, my daughter Lisa's Bishop Museum land down there. The road is so dangerous, the tour, I, I agree on the walking in principle. But not when there's fifty people on the road every place you go. And they're all stuck in these pullouts where we're supposed to go to, and they're all standing there waving us by. Like they're helping us going down the hill, so that's one thing. Tour operators, okay, these, this is the big four-wheel-drive vans with people, fifteen people. Most people nowadays over two hundred pounds, right? Because let's be honest, how many of us don't weigh two hundred pounds, right? In that van going up and down multiple times a day. So as far as the damage to the road, definitely the tour operators, and I love them dearly, it's not a personal thing. But when we look at the weight that is going up and down multiple times a day, that's makes the most impact on the road. Any person that does can do a little bit of math can figure out the ones with heaviest vehicles going down.
You have thirty seconds.
Our buses are the ones. So I want to thank you folks for shutting down that road. For working on it, and just like my daughter said, please think of long-term implications. And let's not just fix it and then open it up again, but find solutions for the future that will help all of Waipio. Mahalo, Nui.
Mahalo, Anake. Uh, we will be going to John, John Farrell, did, did you just change your name? I, I think you're next, John. And then next will be um M Ra, Myra or M Ra.
Yeah, I just changed my name on my wife's computer, and then I was on the, um, I was a Samsung, the Samsung Galaxy that. It wouldn't let me unmute, but um, but anyway, uh, you know, as far as um. You know, when, when Mitch Roth was talking about all the vaccine passports. He mentioned that he didn't want to create division in the community, but anytime that you enforce rules or make policies that. That make rules for, rules for me and not for thee, that's exactly what you're doing, is creating division within the community. And you know, especially for like a lot of the Waipio community, taro farmers and stuff like that. To say that the surfers or the fishermen or the people that dive down there aren't as welcome as, as you are, don't have as much use for Waipio as you are. That's not right, especially if you're talking cultural. Know what I mean? Surfing is just as much a part of culture as, as taro farming, just as much as fishing, diving, and so on. And you know, there's, there's like, you know, it's been said, a lot of us, a lot of us have used Waipio. To feed our families and whatnot, and the thing is like, you can't, you can't dive year-round there. You cannot fish year-round there, you cannot get into the water year-round there. So to cut off access for the people that, in the muted community, especially in the muted community that have always used Waipio. Is just, it's not right and it's not fair. And then, you know, as far as the numbers go, statistics go, I, you know, was looking at it as far as um. The, the risk assessment, those numbers are pretty off, being that, you know, a lot of us has been driving up and down the road for. There hasn't been, there hasn't been an injury for every, whatever it was, seven, seventy-two thousand people, you know. Um, that, that's all I have.
Mahalo, John Fremanau. Uh. It's, it's M period Ra, that, that you can now unmute yourself, sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
Aloha, everybody, my, my name is Mariah, um, Torita Tovarres, I was born and raised in Waipio and. I'm speaking um on behalf of my Ohana, the Torito Ohana who is kalo farmers in Waipio. And I just want to thank you folks for finally listening to us. And we've been voicing this for years, years and years, and like a lot of the people who spoke tonight. Um, safety is a really big issue for us, for my Ohanas as taro farmers. Um, I'm not sure if any of the farmers can also relate to this, but. Coming up that hill with nine hundred plus pounds of taro in the back of the truck with all of your Ohana inside, coming from a long day of work. Going up the steepest part of the hill and there's just so much people, like hikers and everything in the way, and they don't know where to go. And it just really puts a lot of our Ohana at risk and a lot of the people in the valley at risk. And I just think that safety and foot traffic along with um four-wheel-drive vehicles. And people not knowing how to drive the road is a really big problem. And um it's more, more so like when people come and visit. It's like when, if we were going to visit other people's work, workplace and we were interfering with their safety. It's kind of like the same thing, and I see a problem there with safety and not um the tourists not being educated. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mahalo. Um, we're gonna go back to uh some of our um departments. We're gonna start first with our mayor, um, you know, provide any feedback.
Yeah, um, first off, thank you, everybody, for your comments. As you can tell, um, this is not an easy. Uh, decision to make, there's a whole bunch of points on, on all sides. And, you know, we have been discussing these things and, and your feedback really is important. I've, I've made some of the same comments that a lot of you guys have made. Um, and one of the things that um we talked about, and I don't know, Ikaiko or Steven may want to talk about this. Um, but every time you have vehicles going up and down the road. Um, it, you know, i- it doesn't make it stronger. You know, it, there are possibilities of making it a little bit weaker, so that was one of the, the comments that, um, that we, we've heard from the engineers. The other thing we've heard a lot of times with the people walking, um, had to do with cars coming down and, and, you know, creating dangerous situations. Uh, as well, and when, you know, so there's been a whole bunch of different things, but as you can see, to make this decision. It's not an easy decision. Um, and it, it was not an easy decision for me to make. We had to, a- and, you know, there, there's a couple of things that, that come into this. One is the comments about, you know, letting the valley rest. That was not part of this decision. What was part of this decision was safety, and the engineers um who know a lot more than I do. Brought it really quite straight, it's a safety issue. And so that it doesn't get safer as we go around. Um, the comments I made earlier. Uh, on the apologies, I, I had talked to people, I was gonna get back to them. Um, but I did not get back and I wanted to explain why I didn't get back, so there's some confusion about that. Um, I, I really do appreciate all of the comments that everybody is making, and I've, I've written down some good notes. That go both ways, that, you know, I'll be talking to our engineers and talking to our attorneys about, a- as we move forward. Um, but I, I just want to let you know that we hear you, I hear you, what you're saying, and. It, it's a tough decision all the way around, so I'm gonna turn it back over to Ikaika as, or to Steve or. Um, maybe some of the engineers to maybe comment on, on some of the things I just said.
I'm all for that, Mayor. Um, and uh, I'll talk briefly on one of the items you mentioned. A couple of things that we discussed about this with the safety in mind. Uh, there's really, you know, two big items that come to that, to mind when we talk about safety there, is a personal safety and community safety. Uh, first, personal safety is the personal safety of the people that are traversing the road, whether it be in a vehicle or pedestrian. And we consider that with uh the pedestrians and the uncovered vehicles. Of what risk they would have um from falling rocks and dangers and hazards from above. And then when we talk about community safety, um, you know, we talk about this, the, the condition of the road below. And the condition of the slopes, um, you know. Some people are right, they haven't had a, a disaster happen there where the slope falls off or anything, but. We don't know for certainty that it's gonna happen on trip twenty-seven, it's gonna happen on trip uh hundred and sixty-seven thousand and twenty-seven. Um, and every time we allow more trips down this road, we run the risk of having. Um, a serious incident happen with the road and the condition of the road, so we're limiting uh traffic down that road. For the safety. If this road slopes off because someone goes down there, holo-holo. Um, they can still go back home, they can still have access to the rest of their lives, the community in Waipio Valley, they wouldn't have that. And so we took a lot of thought process involved in this beyond just uh our department, uh DPW, to discuss. Um, you know, how do we limit the amount of trips down there, because as discussed by the mayor. Uh, we, we weren't able to close this road, there's no other access for the residents to get in and out, um, and, and go about their, uh, their life. On this, so we're, we're doing the best we can, what's in front of us, and we understand that. Um, this does cause some inconveniences and some impacts to folks' lives, uh surfers. Uh, tourism and all these other businesses, and we don't do this um lightly. We made this decision with a lot of, lot of factors in mind. Um, so I just want to highlight uh some of the, the broad strokes of this safety concerns. Um, and I'll pass it on to Deputy Director Steve Paulze, if you have any other comments you'd like to add at this time.
Steve, can you?
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
No, I'm just, again, building on what Mayor said and what Director Rodenher said. Um, I, I think it's, I, I don't think anyone can argue that this road needs to be fixed. I guess first and foremost, that, that's, that's a comment that, that I don't think you can argue with, it, it needs to be fixed. And there are issues with the road, and I also don't think that anyone can argue with the fact that. If you reduce the number of trips, if you reduce the pedestrians, if you reduce the exposure, you will lower the risk. Um, and uh, one gentleman wanted to argue about what the risk assessment said. You know, the reality of it is, is that we are doing this out of an abundance of caution and, and safety. And there's a whole bunch of engineers at DPW and a whole bunch of engineers at the consulting firm. Who are licensed in the very first and foremost thing in their mind is protect public health and safety. And I believe wholeheartedly that the decisions we're making with recommendations to reduce. Exposure, to reduce traffic, to prevent failure of the road and maybe make it last a little bit longer. Are all wise and prudent. Calls and decisions and recommendations, and. We will work diligently with the community to remedy this situation as best and as fast as we can, but. Um, there's, it were, it's unequivocal that what we're doing is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Mahalo. Uh, we will um now go to another question by uh Dylan. You can go ahead and unmute your. Um, phone.
Yeah, thank you. How's it, everybody? First of all, I cannot figure out why you guys hired a company from Seattle to come and do a study. On a road in Hawaii. That is just as dangerous as driving through the horseshoes, going to Hilo. I mean, what are you gonna do, shut every highway? You're talking about safety. Public safety is not only about whether or not you get hit in the head by a rock. Public safety is whether you can have access and you can take your kids down there and keep them out of trouble, and you're not having. You, you guys have been more of an impact than what you think when you're shutting down access like this. That's all I can say, is. This affects a lot of people and a lot of people weren't involved in the decision to make this happen. Mayor Ross says, it's already seems like it's already, the decision is already made, so I'm not too sure why, you know, this is happening, but. It's definitely not right, and everybody should have access to that place, you know, sign a waiver at the top. Stop the rental car companies from renting cars, like Brandon Lee said, like, and like John Farrell said. Everybody goes on there, they're hunting, they're fishing, they're diving, they want to hike to Waipio, they're gonna go stay over there, go hunt. It's not just about people farming kalo. I respect the kalo farmers, I love poi. Thank you guys for what you do, but there are other sides to sustainability than just what you guys are seeing and talking about. Also, I'd like to hear more from Chris Yuan. He seemed like he had a lot of good points. There's more. There's more to this study than what people are saying. It's not, it's not like you're gonna go down there and get hit in the head with, by a rock. Nobody has ever been hit in the head by a rock walking that road. Except for the guy who got married and divorced on that hill and was eating mushrooms and drinking alcohol and got arrested. And from, from what I can see, good ratings, but anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Dylan. Um. Is Maris, Maris, can you turn your camera on? Okay, mahalo, Maris, uh, you have two minutes, go ahead. Oh, you gotta unmute yourself, hold on. You have to unmute yourself first.
Go.
Yep, there you are.
Hi, I have been a Waipio resident for a little over thirty years. A landowner for ten and a pedestrian for all of those years. The current ban theoretically bans me from coming and going to my home safely. Once you take the tourist numbers out and go down to, from one thirty-seven to probably. Twenty of us residents who walk it, probably not even on a daily basis. Then your numbers for that Australian risk assessment don't hold any water. What am I supposed to do? I come and go. I work outside the valley sometimes, several days a week. Um. It's preposterous to ban residents from being able to access their property. Thank you. Chris Yuan covered all the other bits on those numbers.
I'm sorry, uh, were you done, Maris?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, all right, mahalo. Mahalo for your mana'o. Uh, next we will take the uh, sorry. Oh, Focus, is that your name? You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Aloha, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kaleo. I was born and raised down in Waipio Valley, I've lived in the valley my entire life, both sides of my family are from Waipio. And have been residents of the valley for their lives as well. My grandfather also owns one of the tour companies, but I'm speaking on my own personal behalf. First of all, I want to say that this road closure has been asked for a long time, we're all very happy that this has happened. Everyone in my family is very grateful that the tourists have stopped going into the valley in their own rental vehicles. It was an extreme liability. And as uh employer for one of the major tour companies down there, every single day on that road. I worried for my own safety and the safety of my passengers when driving past people who didn't know how to drive the road. Now going on to say that, I think that banning everyone from the valley is completely unfair, especially for the Kanakamoli, for the native Hawaiian people of this land. To ban their access is completely unreasonable because this valley is their home. In the story of Holoa, this place was the creation point of the Hawaiian people. This is where people of Hawaii came from, the bosom of the earth. This is one of our most sacred places and it should be protected and cherished and respected. But it should also be allowed access for local people, especially native Hawaiians, for their gathering rights and access.
You have thirty seconds.
Although they have been a problem on the road for some people, as we have heard. Allow people from outside of Hawaii the chance to be educated and informed and learn respect for this beautiful place. So that they don't walk away from Waipio like that guy that got hit by the rock and got his wife divorced. I thought that was hilarious. That's all I have to say. Aloha, everybody, and thank you so much.
Mahalo, Kaleo. Um, next we have um Yopa, Monicaia. And then next is, I believe that's Shenee, so Yopa, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Aloha, aloha, Kako. Um, man, you know, as I, um. So I'm listening to the conversation, um, oh, my na'o's there, turning inside. And, you know, and everybody get valid points. But as I listen to, um, you know, um, the different solution, there, there is. I look at this too now as an opportunity now because we have a safety issue. The proclamation. Um, we know, we all know that the road is unsafe to travel, whether you're walking or you driving. But I, I see this now as one um opportunity to now do something about this. And there is, there's the steering committee now that's being offered. So that we can sit on that steering committee and voice our concerns and follow through. and follow true items, stay with them all the way, not just come in halfway and then dig out, stay with them all the way and follow these true. Right? Because right now, obviously, Waipio Valley needs that rest that everybody's talking about. It needs it. I know too, because when I go down there, I see a lot of opala. And and the opala pisses me off. And so who cleaning that up? Right? We gotta clean that up. We gotta figure out these things. And the way we're gonna do that is if we cockle and we go on top of that steering committee and we and we participate. So I think solution wise, let's get into the rooms with the
Thirty seconds.
That committee and let's participate in the solution. And 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 get away from the problem because I don't see a problem. I see an opportunity and I see solution.
Mahalo. Next, we have Shanae's phone. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. Can I can I hear you? Going in and out. Okay, can you can you get on Shanae's phone? Or oh, try again.
All right, can you hear me now?
I can. Go ahead.
All right, aloha. My name is Pat Lockton. Pretty much Waipio Valley is my home. But like how how what I wanted to get to is to me, like how everybody is saying, the safety issue is not one rock coming down. Like we do have landslides and stuff like that, and most of the time is the locals taking care of that. But the safety issue is the people who don't know what they're doing coming down the hill. Most of you guys know, and I would say this every meeting, me and my brothers, me and my ohana, Waipio ohana, one day we'd stop, we 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 went up there and we'd stop all the tourists. And the reason why is, I don't think any of the local people is the problem. It's the people who don't know, like the tourist jeeps and everything else like that. They they don't know how to drive down and the safety, like how everybody said, people coming up with kalo, with tools, with their ohana. It is not safe at all. And one thing that I think is wrong is how is on ahu is on ahupua'a. Maoka tu makai. Why let people go and do other things and you cannot let people makai do what they have to do? I think the people at the top of the guard shack, they they know who can go down as well. But to stop access of like how Kaleo said, Hawaiian, native Hawaiians, that is wrong. We all get our purposes to go down there. And I think that we should all imua, like how that one uncle said. Enough with the problem, we need to assess the solution. And I think the way is the way of the people. And I believe if you stop the community of going down there and just letting the taro farmers go, which I am a taro farmer, but the farmer need the local and the local need the farmer. If you split those two together in half, we don't go no place. We gotta imua. So that's just all I have to say. Gotta choose the right.
Mahalo, Pat.
How I mute myself now, honey?
I go mute you. I got you. Okay, next we got Roland. Hey Roland, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and show your video.
Mahalo for your input. On the surfing community, spending time in the back as well. I have concerns just like everybody else, and we hear everybody else's concerns from in the valley of safety issues from overpopulation and tourism. Right now, that's not why the valley is closed. Those are separate issues that need to be addressed and we need to have the ability to address those issues. But right now, we're closing the valley based on a third party safety geotechnical survey from Australia using Australia figures. That's Chris Yuan, who has a better background in explaining the facts of that. That in my mind, in my background, when I read it, seems pretty bogus. Once again, I go down to Waipio, I run my business in Honocaa because of Waipio. Because of my access to Waipio for my fulfillment and my cultural practice of surfing, bringing my ohana down to Waipio, sharing that valley with my ohana is so important to me. We just had my first sons, my, I do not have Hawaiian blood, my kids have Hawaiian blood. And for their access is so critically important to our lives. And it's heartbreaking to see that we're closing it for a bullshit reason, pardon my French, and not the actual reasons that need to be addressed. And on point with Pat, I think there's issues. And as I've heard all of the residents and the taro farmers express, there are issues that need to be addressed. Let's not avoid dealing with those issues by closing it for a reason that not everybody's on board. And I think we need to face the facts and deal with them. And as simple as creating a cultural, educational protocol that people have to go through before they have access to Waipio. Let them understand the culture and the significance of the place. Let them understand the safety and the necessary.
All right, mahalo, Roland. You can put your thoughts or comments in the chat box.
Okay, hello, everyone. I'm seeing that, you know, Chris is still with his hand raised and so is Peter. But out of respect for everybody, we only give everybody two minutes. We're only giving everybody two minutes. We cannot allow folks to to have more time than that, and that's only because it's unfair. You know, Chris has has raised those points with us numerous times. He's talked to a bunch of a bunch of us and we're continuing those conversations. And we, you know, if you're interested in hearing from him, I'm sure you can message him directly here, or we could talk on the next forum that'll hopefully be in person so we can share space, not just virtual, but but in person. There's a couple of things I want to talk about is that first thing is that I believe Councilmember Kimbo, and she could correct me if I'm wrong, is is hosting a working group to look at the long term issues. That has nothing to do with this geotechnical report, but access moving forward and 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 valley restoration and all of those types of things. So if you're interested, I I do believe that she can she can unmute herself if she'd like. They they are working through that and you're able to reach out to her office if you'd like to be a part of that that conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Cyrus. I'll just briefly say that, you know, this has been a conversation, the the long term management, the the tourism access and and how to resolve this overuse of of this really important natural and cultural resource. That conversation's been happening for a long time. And the decision was made to actually go through a facilitated planning process, and that decision happened last September. In October, we got funding and we were just ready to kick it off this month, and then this closure happened. So it's it's a different process, it's a separate process, but a lot of those concerns that you folks raised tonight will hopefully be addressed through that process, and there will be community meetings associated with that, but that is a different process than this closure related discussion. Thank you, Cyrus, for the opportunity to discuss that.
Thank you, Councilmember. And you know, it looks like we have one more person with their hand raised. I think that'll be the final person of the evening, and then that way we can have the final five minutes to wrap up and kind of close up with our thoughts. But I think this is all very encouraging, and so I'm sure if you can call on the next person and then we'll wrap it up.
Yes, we get Manuel Kululoya. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. You have two minutes.
Hello, Ms. Connie, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can. Go ahead.
You know, I grew up on the island of Maui, a district called Honua Ula that encompasses Haleakala, down to Ulupalakuwa, Palaua, Bae, to Makena Keoni O'Io, Molokini and Kahole Lave. We grew up traveling under the overhangs between Manawainui and Kaupo to Kipahuulu or Ulupalakuwa or Kahakula roads or hana that overhangs. And we need to figure out a way here. I never thought I'd ever go to Waipio Valley. So Kamia Mia Schools, Oha Bishop Museum, Antikoo. On Maui, we heard of the Kanakua families. We heard of the Kaholova and the Holova, they're taro farmers. I've been to Waipio via helicopter. I'm thinking of when Hanalei got shut down, people had to come via the ocean. To the mayor, our brother Cyrus Ikaika, we need to continue the dialogue to allow access to this place in the interim. And I hope there can be more dialogue. And these are the stresses for their brother that called, called me a dumb Hawaiian, you know? Never heard that in a long time, forty years, sister. But to that brother, he speaks exactly about all of us who have spoken today that should and deserve access. If we feel Waipio is sacred, avahipana, we would never
Thirty seconds.
We would never go down there drunk, intoxicated and the like. That's the hanainu of the mentality of going down there and the results. I'm sorry that someone got hurt, but it's that kind of mentality. They don't deserve to go to this kind of place that we believe we know is special and sacred. So continue the dialogue. It's important now, especially during the opening up of COVID. No more restrictions. Thank you, ma'am.
Mahalo. We're gonna go back to Cyrus or the mayor and our director for any final thoughts?
Well, first, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody. And to our last speaker, you know, this is a dialogue. For those of you who know me, I I do listen and, you know, I do take these things back to my team. I've I've gone back to them several times. And, you know, again, this is not an easy decision. And it was one that wasn't, you know, taken lightly. To me, it was, you know, about safety, but I think there was great points made all around. As you can tell, you know, it wasn't all one sided tonight. There was there was opinions from the community. And so, you know, one of the things is, Mayor, you have to make a decision, and and I had to make a decision. That decision, you know, still, there's ways that we can work in things. And so the the dialogue is super, super important to me. And I I just want to thank all of you, not what side of this position, what positions you took. I just want to thank you all for for giving, uh, giving some voice. We, you know, I heard you. I know that our team has heard you, and I know that we'll have this little bit more of this dialogue tomorrow morning. So I I just really appreciate everybody here. And I don't know, Cyrus, if you guys have anything else, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, you got to go. I'll I'll punt to you real quick if you want to say anything, and then I'll I'll wrap it up. Yeah, mahalo, Mary. I'm mahalo, Cyrus, for that. Real quick, yes, mahalo for everyone's input here today. I know there's multiple sides to this situation, and we do hear what you're saying. And we will take this to heart and consider this moving forward. This isn't the last time we're gonna talk about this, and this isn't the last time we're gonna talk about our plans moving forward with working on the road. And so we'll definitely keep you informed of how that progresses. We intend to continue the communications and continue the dialogue with you folks, as the mayor mentioned. So mahalo for being here tonight, and mahalo for your continued dialogue in this matter for Waipio Valley. Mahalo, Ikaika. Mahalo, everybody, for for joining us. I know we have a minute left, and so to really quickly wrap up all of this. It's really, really important that everybody understands, and I know some folks don't want to believe that that this when when people are saying this is open dialogue, that the decision is not foul, the decision to close the road and to mitigate risk along the road, it has been done. How we go about doing that is why we're here. And so all of the suggestions you folks provided us, all of the different manao and ike that all of you, from your varying perspectives, have have shared, is going to help shape that. And you know, right now, we've done what we believe is equitable, based upon our corporation councils research and and based upon sort of these conversations, but certainly, every obstacle is meant to go over, around or through. And I believe the only problem I've heard this entire evening is that people want, local people want local access to do local things. I haven't heard anything else aside from that as a problem on this call, except for the brother from Dallas. And that's something I think we're gonna take to heart. I feel that more than anything, you know, as we lost Pohiki, Pohiki and other surfing spots and 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 favorite local spots over the years. It hurts to lose places that that you find to be special to you, whether Kanaka, non Kanaka and the like. And so I think I just want everybody to know that that nothing you said or written is is for not. Everything is gonna be taken into serious consideration. We have a mayor who who really does care. We have a DPW team that really does care. And whether it seems really strict or really harsh, I would just hope you leave knowing that our hearts are in the right place, and there's really good people trying their hardest to make this thing work out for everybody. And so from 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 us to you, we just wanna just mahalo you all for for your time and sharing space with us virtually. You know, there's a couple of questions here, where where it's gonna end up and all that. We're gonna try to get this on our website. We're gonna work to with with Councilmember Kimbo and everybody to get the next meeting up and running, to find time that works for everyone. Would it probably be somewhere where we're a little bit more sure of where we're going as far as getting the bids out and 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 seeing all the type of things. I shouldn't talk for the engineering team, but it'll probably be when we have more information to share. That way, it's not redundant and we're not wasting anyone's time. I know a lot of you folks had to travel up the valley or or find other accommodations to get on this call, so it's very appreciated. We're gonna save all the chat. We recorded this thing, so we'll be able to post the chat, all the questions from the chat. We'll we'll create some kind of Q and A. We'll share this video so you can rewatch and and hear some of the things over again. And then we'll continue to engage all of you as much as possible as we continue to work through this. And, you know, I I wouldn't give up yet. I would just continue to think of solutions and share them because the more ike we get, the more we can do, and the more perspective we gain. So mahalo, everyone. I went a little over time. You guys have a wonderful evening. Ahuiho and malama. Take care.